Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion in a second to approve the United Agenda.
We have, is that close?
Uh huh.
Yes. I'm looking at the meeting. I would make a motion to adopt the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Approval of August 5, 2024 minutes. Again, I would do a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'm not prepared to originate the minutes since we just got them. So I ask that we can delay until next day.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion also carries. Public comment. Citizens may speak on items not listed on the printed agenda. Please state your name and address, Senator, through the time limit.
I'm sorry.
Anybody want to speak publicly? Okay. Move on. Public hearing subdivision, Flat Reedy, Todd Yates, for a partial number. I'm not going to read that. It's a big one. Todd, would you like to speak on that?
I just appreciate, first of all, thank you all for what you do. I know what it is to serve the public and I admire what you do and thank you very much. This is a 15 acre tract I've owned for quite a few years. Think this will be a good addition to the housing shortage in Denton. So hopefully it'll help maybe put some kids in our schools out there, so that we need kids. And we plan to do a nice project and I would just appreciate you all's support. I have my engineer here. He'd like to speak with him about some of the details. I know some, but he knows more, so. Any questions for me?
What price range homes are you looking at?
These homes will probably be $300,000, $250 to $300. That's about what they call a starter home now, so.
That's good. They should sell good here.
I think so. So I have two or three buyers, two for sure, that is interested in the project now, so. And I spoke with one the other day from Arizona. So it's three people interested in that.
Do you have problems with DOT coming off Garner Road?
That's his line of work and I would say no. We've got preapproval now, so, you know, until you get the signature on the dotted line, there's always hoops to jump through, so.
Todd, would it be a big thing to make that hammerhead a cul-de-sac?
We can make it a cul-de-sac. I was just talking to Angel about that and I believe the cul-de-sac is more difficult to get turned around in. I think maybe we build our radiuses a little bigger for the hammerhead because you pull up, back up, and pull out. Now, I think he was telling me the fire chief said that he had difficulty in turning around on.
Especially if there happened to be a car there, he couldn't turn it around.
Right, and that would just be enforcement of making sure that nothing parts in that hammerhead turnaround. Chief Dorsey gave me the measurements for the truck. You know, standard is 100 feet radius and we have a difficult time at Broad, which is our standard in a cul-de-sac area, so.
The state minimums are tight, especially the longer, the bigger the trucks are getting now, the tighter they are to turn. So I was just telling her on 64 where they done the new roundabouts. We can't get our trucks turned into one on the west side, so I think the state's going to come back out and widen that one even more, so. But that's, I mean, we want to make it right, so whatever we got to do to make it wide enough, we will make sure the fire trucks.
I'm firing in.
Right. We will actually even test it and make sure before we put the asphalt down, so.
So there's only one way in and one way out?
Yes.
So traveling time, the very last houses in development, how long would it take them?
The very last, do you have a picture of the plant there?
I'll lay it out before you look in.
If you don't mind the approach. The last lot here, I guess, would be the last, what you'd call the last lot. So he can probably, he or she can get from here to there in probably less than a minute. And I'm guessing I haven't done a scale. Let me see here, that's, need my glasses.
Like 1500 feet.
Is that what it is, 1500?
It's close to 1500.
I was looking for station number. Uh, it's, yeah, 1700 and, 1700 feet to the last house.
That shaded area, what is that supposed to be? What do you think it was?
The shaded area between, in that middle section is where the sewer will come from one side of the road to the other.
What about the other shaded area?
That's where we was coming originally to the sewer.
Yeah.
And now I think we're going to pick it up on Garner Road on this side.
Okay.
So this one here on North Main, because we got to cross the Duke Energy right away, too, that I let them have across my property, so we'll do away with that.
Thank you.
Go to Garner. Thank you. I'm going to leave that up there because if you've got any more questions. And I'll let Cory answer the rest of them. That's what it's going to take for, not much, but.
Any more questions from Todd? If not, I need a motion in a second to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? That motion carries. This time I'd like to open the public hearing. If you can come forward and speak for or against this project and try to improve our time limit. You want to hear and then see and then require a motion in a second to close it?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is now closed. And sport can take any action on this item at this time.
I make a motion to approve the targets of being nominated by national review as presented and as recommended by the planning committee.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? That motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Resolution 242503, accept grant funding for asset inventory and assessment funding for the water treatment system. Angel Jenkins.
Mayor, Commissioner. We have received our letters for funding approval for the AIA grants that we have applied for through, with the help and assistance from Wootton Engineering. Both of these grants are for $200,000 to do an asset inventory and assessment for both our water and our sewer systems. Wootton Engineering would be the firm that's handling both of these AIA studies. DEQ doesn't require that you approve the funding for both projects. It is at 100%. So you have two resolutions before you tonight. Resolution 2425-3, which is for the, I think it's on the, I'm sorry. I shouldn't highlight it on my copy. It's for the water system and then 2425-4 is for your wastewater collections. So we need a motion and approval on both resolutions.
And what exactly are we going to do?
So what they do is they come in and they map out our entire system for, like, what we own, what's the life of that property, like, if you take the water plant. They're going to look at every piece of equipment that we have, every part of the system. They'll look at the infrastructure, the same thing for the sewer. They give us, like, projected life of, let's say.
Sixteen inch line.
Sixteen inch line. They're going to look at it, go tell us what the life is of it, what projected cost of repair or replacement would be, things like that. It will go through the whole system. It's something that we've never had done, so it's going to be a benefit for us to know how to budget going forward with our CIPs, which we are required to keep updated so that Troy can follow those with our state reporting. They do ask for information like that. Give us a better idea of where we are and where we need to be.
In order to clarify about these resolutions, do you think they're after, it says?
It's in the second paragraph. One is.
Okay, and then the water treatment system?
Uh huh, and then water, wastewater collection system.
Okay.
Now, will they give us sizes? Like, you have so much six inch, so much three inch, whatever?
That I'm not sure. I will definitely ask for more clarification. We just got the paperwork in, I think it was Thursday. So when I talked to John Gray, he said we can get, go ahead and get the ball rolling, get you guys to accept the funding, that he'll provide information, he needs from us to get started. I would think that that would be a part of what an asset is, is letting us know, yes, I verify you got six inch lines here, verifying where two inch still are, things like that. As that information comes available, I will share that out to you guys, so that you have more details of what they're going to be noting in that study.
For future reference, though, I know that it says that in the whereas up there, but in the resolution itself, shouldn't we have something about, like, offer a $200,000 for water treatment system and for wastewater collection system moving forward? So that resolution actually says what it's for, not just say we're taking your $200,000?
So it is listed out in the resolution in the second.
That's the inventory assessment grant, all perfect.
For the wastewater collection system, I mean, we can.
That's part of the whereas, this is the actual resolution down here.
The whole thing's the resolution.
I'm not being the way, where.
Okay.
Just love your talk.
Yeah, I mean, we can repeat it if you'd like to, but that's just semantics.
Okay.
The entire thing is there.
Good deal.
Yes. I'm so honored. That's okay. But it's a Tuesday, Monday, so I had to look back and make sure.
Are there any other questions you guys have regarding either wastewater or the water?
I think it's exciting that we've just gotten started. Get the governor in.
I make a motion to accept them with the separate word, Madam Attorney?
Um, yes, if you'll do them separately.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the water treatment system, $200,000 grant, asset inventory project.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? That motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the water system, $200,000 grant, asset inventory.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? That motion carries also. Consideration approval for police department floor and project. Angel Jenkins.
The hallway at the police department that runs between the captain and the chief's office had an issue where it was giving way. We had Deets Flooring came in and looked at the floor, took up the subfloor and discovered that there had been some water damage to the floor at some point. All of that has been repaired. It was actually public works encased the water line in, I guess, in metal?
PVC.
PVC, so that if there's ever any issues in the future, they can go back in and repair without having to bust a whole floor. However, that has left a subfloor, just a basic floor. We need to repair or, I mean, replace that flooring in the hall, but at the time, it would be a good time to go ahead and do the police department. Fire department was done about five years ago. We did get a quote from Deets on just repairing the hallway, which will be replaced with a Mohawk. It is a type of, I've got to look over my office, I forgot to bring it over, but it looks like the new tiling from Mohawk was a little bit thicker, harder product, it's commercial grade. They gave us a quote for installing that just in the hall area or doing the entire fire, uh, police department. And then also, if we're looking at doing this, it will be a good time for us to go ahead and update and paint the remaining paneling that's in the building. It's still old brown paneling and it would give a really nice update if the board decides to do the entire project.
Is $11,000 plus the 2,200?
No, the 2,286 is just to do the hallway. The 11,33558 is to do the entire police department side. And that was with them doing the installation and moving the furniture throughout the installation so we didn't have to have someone set up to do that as well.
Ma, let me bring you to say you tried to get quotes from people in the past and you couldn't get quotes. Is this the same one?
We have been trying for about six months to get someone in there just to do the repair before repair. And finally, I think the last meeting, Commissioner Morris recommended that we reach out to Deets Flooring and they came right out and looked at it and took care of it. We've tried area businesses as well.
I was thinking you said that.
Yes, we did.
I don't guess we know if we ever make any kind of moves, is this going to affect? I don't spend $11,000 for nothing if we're going to make some kind of move and the fire department needs to change something.
Well, with the flooring.
I mean, that's unknown.
The current flooring that is there now is the old tile, like in Town Hall, it's like eight by eight or 10 by 10. Eventually it'll have to be replaced whether it's fire department or police department, where furniture's been located over the years and been moved, that there's grooves cut in the.
Yeah, I'm saying about walls, if it's involved, can they move it again?
That's true. I mean, I don't know, we don't know what the future would, needs would be, but currently the, there's, what, two rooms in the front, there's the chief's office, captain's office, and then the room that leads into the evidence room, kind of like their central storage room, lockers and things like that. You know, it could be that those areas are adapted as they are to meet the needs of the police department. Any other questions that you guys have? So it would be, you know, a motion to either just do the hall or to look at doing the entire flooring and also painting the hallway or, I think it's just in the halls and the front office, is that correct?
The hall there, the office is already painted gray. Captain's office is painted, so it would be the hallway and the front two offices that have the panel.
Is Deets Flooring doing the painting?
No, we just, when we got the quote from Deets and I talked to the chief on Friday, Thursday and Friday afternoon, we talked about that if we were going to go through the trouble of us doing this kind of work, we need to go ahead and update everything. It would make the office look a little bit more appealing if the public comes in.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the whole job for the police department at 11,33558.
And to include painting?
To include painting, yes.
Second.
Second.
But that 11,335.
Does not include. And I will get the contractor to do that.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? That motion carries. Review proposed water line connection for Fletcher Lane and Highway 47. Angel Jenkins.
I met with Bobby Kivett briefly last week, two weeks ago and last week. In review of what the study projected from Highway 47, when they ran the test on the valves with Handy Sanitary District, and there was not a huge difference that he could see in the pressure. We were, you know, checking lines, North Main, Spring Street, and Broad Street. Not a huge difference in the flow or the pressures on either of those locations, which is what we were hoping it would show with that valve actually turned on. In looking at going forward and trying to do an interconnection with that hydrant that is located at Fletcher Lane, we talked about connecting it to either the 10 inch line or possibly to that six inch line that's across the street with Handy. Mr. Kivett is leaning more towards us connecting straight across with Handy's line there and potentially moving their master meter down and having that a working meter and working valve. Eventually, it would provide a better system for us and them as well without that dead end line there. They said when they turned on that hydrant at Carter Davis Road, it was running stagnant water that had ran because they had not had it on in at least 10 years. This is just a proposal that they're looking at, potentially, you know, talking to Handy's, I think Mac Summy and Handy's engineer are looking at this as a possibility so that they can kind of come to grasp on if that would be a good fit for us and them, and then seeing what they can do to propose that to DEQ for a change out on that particular line. They are also still checking that interconnection that they have with us on North Main Street, running a test for hydraulics on the valve sets at the corner of Ford, excuse me, I'm kind of tied, Ford Street and North Main, prior to it going into the pump station there on North Main. The pump station is where the major problem is and our pressure issues throughout that system. And I did share with them our concerns with this subdivision coming in into North Main Street, that that's going to require more water and that we do need to have this, you know, accomplished so that we know what we can do and what we need to do. We need, you know, to add pump stations ourselves or something in order to get that pressure in that system for us. I don't want them to install this new subdivision and then we have even more problems because it's pulling off the same line, so. But this is just a preliminary. I said Mac and Mac Summy and Bobby Kivett are throwing this into their system, seeing what different outcome would be in the system if we can just connect there. Otherwise, we would have to go all the way to Third Street and do that connection off that 10 inch line, which would be more water, more line and cost a lot more as well. This would be a short connection in the system, so. I'll have more updates on that as I progress on this project.
You can come off the hive in that thermo?
Um. Um, oh, you're talking about the one there at, is that Ford Street?
That's in thermo joint.
Okay. I'll ask them to run the model that way as well.
I'm just thinking the cost of a new meter in the valve box, now that's not going to be cheap, I'm afraid.
It's not, but that's something that moving forward, we definitely need to be considering is that they really should be our meters, not Handy's meters, because we're selling them the water. So if we moved or require that they move that meter box further down the road, it could be that open door that we start establishing ownership of those meters. And it also would be a better connection for them to provide more water to, I believe that goes out to Camp Walter Johnson, if I'm not mistaken, that area does. But see, everything that pulls through there is kind of straight off of North Main.
So when they turned it on, it didn't affect anybody?
The only thing it affected was the water plant and, because he was in contact with Jason, and he said all of a sudden the whole system started dropping pressure, so it didn't show. That's what they don't know and that's why it was very confusing. He was expecting to see a huge drop in one place or another, but Jason called and said it was system wide. So it was, thought it was demanding water at that point. They are still running those, but I'll ask them to run it with connecting at the hydrant at thermo. And see if that could be a possibility there.
Because they ain't supposed to notify us, I mean, they're not supposed to be tapping with the meters without us knowing they're changing them or anything.
They're supposed to. They changed out Bobby Road and we only knew that because the salesman for a Ford one asked Michael where they were putting the six inch meter on the system. So I contacted Mr. Hannah and he said, oh, we're changing out this master meter. It's been that way for years. It's been that way ever since I've been here. They change out meters at their own will.
I don't think it says that in the contract.
It does not.
I will bring that up in my quarterly meeting.
Okay. That is, that is a huge concern and I think it'll be some, a good conversation to have, especially when we look at the AIA meters. They're this company that Summy actually works with that looks at all of the large meters and I'm trying to get a list to him of what size metering, how many we have and such, and possibly have them come in and do a study on just those meters and look at calibrating the larger meters and see where we are on that, which I know Handy has their own calibrations done annually, but we should do.
And usually about one guy that does it, they're in the right muscle.
He's retired.
This guy's actually out of Wisconsin, but he works the area a lot, so we can get on the tail end of him going to an area, so we can help split the cost of it, but he's significant just kind of here.
There's one thing in here I don't quite understand, if you don't mind trying to explain it to me. Says the entire system was losing water. When I first read that, I was thinking, is that losing water or losing water pressure?
It's just that it was demanding water. I guess it's in a way that I say it and it's interpreted, but the whole system was demanding water. Things are stable, the pump came on or the valve was open and so it was demanding a lot of water, which took all the system down.
So Jason could see that at the water plant? Wow.
Must say that uncracked with Jason.
Jackson.
Oh, you left.
It could have stabilized back out. I don't know exactly how long they left the valve open.
Yeah, took too long.
But it could have stabilized back out if they'd have left it on for a while, but it's not going to help for pressure. If, if, if we're going to run a water line, I would shoot, I would, we're as much about moving that master meter. I would try to go and kill the old two inch line going into Mall of Trail and the old one inch gallon line going to Sawmill and Jimmy's Thomas Old House. If we could shoot a six across the road, we could kill that inch and three quarter, cast our line all the way down 47, tie everybody over on that six and then get rid of that old line at the front yard and the, and then just shoot right there on the other side road, on the left side road and tie right into the house. If we're going to have to replace line.
The only ones on that line up through there is Roy's Old House and Mall of Trail, right?
No.
Oh, Scotty's car was coming through.
Two inch line.
Okay.
It comes off the old two inch line, just on the left side road going down here. There's a six inch line on the right side road. And Jimmy's, Danny's house is still on the three quarter inch line. The house right across the road from it's still on the three quarter inch line.
So when Mac and Bobby Kivett are back in town, I'm going to have Michael go up there and go up there and look at all that, because, I mean, we know what's in the ground, but they're, you know, they're working off the papers and have been discovered that we've got two or three different sets, some of them are not updated off of it as well. So if Michael's stating this information tonight, we'll just have him go work with them on that.
Anything else on this item? Moving on. Moving on. Town Department head reports. Administration, Paul Heather.
We have picked up the town sign. It looks really good. Michael poured some steel to use as the cross braces from the back of the sign going into the post. So once that is in, that will be installed. Total water consumption was four million nine sixty-five gallons. And regarding Handy, I'm working on that report and we'll be glad to forward out what every situation was for the month. I had questioned a couple of totals just to make sure that I have them correct. And I did receive those back in and waited to plug those in.
Will that report be ready?
I should have it tomorrow.
And so you'll send it on us?
Mm-hmm. Wastewater Treatment Plant totals, Troy divided this, so I included it in my report for August. Total treated was twelve million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand gallons. Average daily flow is three hundred ninety-six thousand gallons per day. And that's all I have to discuss.
Who reads the master meters?
Sure, Lord, or David.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure we're still us.
What's the ETA on the steel getting in to be able to get the sign out?
It's in.
It's in?
I just got to get time to build it.
Okay. When, how long do you think?
It's going to put, keep, what can you call it on our ears?
Get there about a middle of the month, we could have that done.
Put it up like a picture. Uh, yeah, I mean, all I got to do is do a little measure and do a little inlet in the six oh six hose counter sink with steel, steel channel and paint it and drill some holes and concrete in the ground. Sign it.
Okay.
And the picture he is referencing is one that I showed you guys initially in the budget meeting dating back. Just shows him how it's put together.
Any questions from Paul? If not, Police Department, uh, James.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. We have filled six positions and still have one left. As you know, we did the assessment center. We selected Captain Claude Felter for that position. Still have not been able to fill the sergeant position. We did make some offers. Some folks declined. One person that declined was offered a job as a probation officer and she was starting at sixty-seven thousand dollars. So hard to compete with that. I conferred with the town manager. I think that that will be reposted and hopefully we'll be successful in recruiting someone to fill that position. And in the event we don't find anybody for a sergeant position, then I think we convert it to an officer position and try to provide more coverage and more backup for officers that are working Lake Ship. We were able to find three U shotguns and Craig's firearms and Concord. I drove down and picked those up. We bought those for two hundred and fifty dollars a piece, which is a savings to the taxpayers. And we are currently installing the Orange Less Lethal stocks and forearms and those weapons. And a week from today, the officers that have not had less lethal training will go to the Davidson County Sheriff's Office where their instructor will provide training and then their off, all of our officers will be equipped with less lethal shotguns. We have received the three F N rifles that you approved in the budget. And we also got the Holosun Green Dot sights. And those are installed. So the next step is a date to go to the firing range. And after that, they successfully qualify, then our personnel will be equipped with rifles as well as the less lethal shotguns. Interested in, and this is not on your agenda, this is an afterthought. I need to move the speed signs. I don't know if you have any input from the public as to where you may be hearing complaints, but if you do, you can tell me now or send me an email or the manager an email and I'll be glad to try to consider those. But I think it's time that we do move those to try to keep people aware of speed. So if you get complaints in any areas, areas I'm not aware of, let me know and we'll certainly try to accommodate those. Today, one of the officers made a recommendation. I thought it was a pretty good recommendation and I think it may come from his significant other that, as you know, teachers each year spend a lot of money out of their own pockets for school supplies. And this officer said that his significant other recommended that maybe the police department to show support for our students and education, maybe we could come up with a method to collect funds and provide those funds to the Denton Elementary School to assist them in their educational endeavors. Not sure how you feel about that. You know, he said maybe put it in convenience stores. I said, well, the problem with that, somebody could steal the money out of those boxes that sometimes they do for cancer patients and things like that. Actually, I've not discussed it with the manager yet, but maybe we could do that at that town hall if the ladies had time to deal with that. Just trying to see what your thoughts are and where we might put that donation box. But I think it's a good gesture. And we're certainly be glad to work with the schools if that's approved.
Hey Chief, I got an idea.
Okay.
A duck and booth at the festival with the policeman.
That'll work. I'd probably be right in front of the line, wouldn't I?
That might be good P R and raise some money too, I mean.
That's true. And somebody actually had recommended that to me one time, but they would love to throw a softball and dunk me.
There you go. I backed us to a ducking booth.
Right.
I'm just saying.
Hey, we can let the town manager go first. I can go right behind them.
I'll do it.
I think if y'all are willing to do that, I think that might be more visible, more effective. Better P R for, and then get it all down in one day.
Right, yeah. I'm not opposed to that. I think working with the schools, it would be a great gesture. And I know when I was working the traffic direction in the mornings, there's nothing better than those kids that come up and give you a hug. And I was at a house today and one of the kids from the school that also attends our church, he came up and hugged me, I think twice, didn't you Matt? So, you know, sometimes you're having a greater influence on these children than even we realize. So a good idea of Mr. Marks and I'll get wet for the calls. We better do it before it gets too cold.
You could really play it up with, you know, with.
Oh, cold is bad.
And help the kids all at the same time. I mean, that would be really a draw.
Exactly right. All right, we'll certainly explore that. Be glad to answer any questions you may have about police operations, anything at all.
How many officers are now speed trained?
We only have one officer trained, Officer Cushee. It's a week class. That's something that's on our radar to do. I'd love to get this seventh person. So we got shifts covered before we do that. But we definitely need to do that now. Captain Claude Felter is certified. If I'm understanding, he's just got to go be checked off on our B three radar. Once he gets that done, then gets his permit back from Raleigh, he too can do speed enforcement. As you know, we get free radars from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. We've got one brand new one that'll go in somebody's car, possibly Officer Gama's. And then we're going to put in for another one. But because of COVID, it took over a year extra to get the last radar. We actually just received it a few weeks ago. So we'll be able to explore maybe using a lidar handheld unit that could be given from officer to officer as they change shifts rather than having one permanently mounted in the car. So that's another possibility. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think it is time to move the speed limit signs.
Yes.
Because they don't pay attention to them anymore. It's a raceway, you know.
Right. And we have issued some citations. I know Officer Cushee has. We were on the dog complaint. I was through the woods, sort of back behind my favorite banker's home through the woods. And I heard the siren and they had to stop somebody from speeding and wrote a citation. So we need to do more of that because as our town grows, we've got to send a message. But I'll tell you, I heard positive comments. I don't even know the citizen's name, but twenty-five mile an hour signs on Spring and Broad, he was bragging at a convenience store that he thought that had really made a difference and that people had slowed down. So he was glad to see that.
I stopped by and was talking to one of the people that had come to the meeting to complain about, about the speed and the traffic and everything. I stopped by after the signs were up a few weeks and asked him if he had noticed a difference. And he said, yes. He said, I've noticed a big difference. And he said, he said, I think this is just what we needed. So they were pleased.
The Ford Explorer that we bought, the usual, are we going to, you may have brought this up somehow or another, I may have forgot, but the decals and so forth on the car, it's actually getting outfitted as we speak. I think we'll have it back this week. We're not going to put a mobile radio in it. We'll just use the portals, but it'll have blue lights, siren. And then once we get it back from there, the plan is to put decals on it. So we're working to move forward. And once we pick it up, our goal is to take the new charger and then we will have it outfitted and have it with the ghost markings pretty soon.
I didn't know if you were going to leave it as unmarked or since it was going to be usual.
Right. And my view is that maybe we make it marked just for visibility reasons. That's, that's
I think.
That's my view, but I'd certainly be glad to do whatever you folks or the manager want. I'm pretty easy.
That's my view too, Marky.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Leave it unmarked. They're going to know in thirty minutes it's unmarked police cars. So you're not going to mark it.
People wave at me all the time. They think I'm Marky. They know that Tahoe, I promise. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Brandon Dorsett.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. Well, we'll piggyback with the P D since they brought it up. And we'll, we'll get in the duck and booth with you. On the fire side, they can call it Duck-a-Hero Day. So we think that'd be a good idea. I'm glad that that was brought up. And moving forward, we don't have a whole lot to report. We did assess the public works and cleaning out the public work, old public work building. We've discovered that there was about fourteen sets of turnout gear down there that's out of date. In the past, we have donated that to the school system for them to use. And we've also donated through the Globe Initiative. I can check with the school to see if they're in need of any turnout gear, but since the high school programs have been started and they seem to do pretty good, a lot of the other county agencies has already like filled the school full, full of old gear. So I would recommend that we reach back out to the Globe Initiative and donate it to the third world countries that do not adhere to the N F P A standards. We've done that in the past. And then we also found some old surplus items that we would need to get approved and submitted to surplus and sell. That we're, we're not going to use it. It's all just laying around.
Chief Dorsett spoke to Elizabeth Delswick earlier about bringing the information to her so she can bring this to our next meeting for approval.
I have a small list on the, on my report. A glue, her system pump, a combi tool, two hydraulic reels, a ventilation fan, five S E B A cylinders and miscellaneous hooves, equipment connections. As far as incidents, we ran a total of sixteen. One fire, four fire alarms, three recs, three M S calls and five other responses. More than likely tree downs from the storm that rolled through. Anything for me?
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Public Works, Michael H.
Mine's pretty short. Y'all have a copy of it. Anthony is a little freaky. He's gone. We'll miss him. Brandon and Thomas, both of them set for exams. We don't know if they passed or not yet. We'll want them for a couple more weeks. I talked to my cell phone today about some lightning arresters. They're a hundred bucks a piece. I'm going to order some of these and try them. I got half a night during that storm on pump station. Every time I get one going, another pop off. We're having a lot of trouble. I had a water plant also. I got a little something put in the water plant. I was losing plug ends down there, so. Handy had a major leak this morning. Drainer forty-nine tank, they repaired it. They have to work a few extra hours to get it filled back up. That's what we can do about that. We've been trying to dig some of these water lines up and surfaces. EPA is making us check. I think it's every connection built before nineteen eighty-six. There are going to be a lot of holes in the roofs. But we have to actually dig them up, verify there's an underlaid connections. If there are, take them out. We found three that we've replaced here lately. Just lucky with water leaks, we dug them all the way back to the main line, laid, we took it out. We're going to have to get on that though. All the aluminum come in for sewer plant work we have to do for Troy. Going to try to get the demo done as quick as we can get it done. I got one piece. I'm having to have turn the radius. They'll have it in about two weeks. That's the last piece and then we're trying to get all the aluminum. And that's about it for the public worksite, our usual.
We're good. Any questions from Mike? If not, thank you, Mike. Wash my truck, is that?
I see it. How about getting them all washed about once a month or something like that? Ready to do that?
What?
Once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah.
I'll try. I've got a pretty bad water loss right now though, but I'll give it a shot.
They can thank you on rainy days.
Yeah. Okay, now I'm going to take Jason's place because he had, they had to leave. Y'all just run that down yourself because, you know, it's, it's, it's average. High turbidity because, you know, the hurricane coming anyway a lot of the time. That's going. Now we're actually battling no turbidity. I think that's worse than high turbidity. I can treat mud, I can't treat nothing. The stream current leader, we got it installed, re-cloned everything, got it popped in, got it wired. One of these lightning arresters is doing on it because I had to go down there and replace two plug ends for the other day. Lightning hit somewhere downstream and it dried both two ground fault plug ends. Really don't need to try that. Brandon's thinking of your stream current leader. Everybody's been trained on it. Jason, he says he's updating the SOPs, training everybody on SOPs. I got to get down there and fix some surface sweeps. I see it's on his list right here. That's where he he's going to want a backup flash mixer. I need to get a quote. How much should it be? We got to wash the basins. I told him I'd help you. I see short stack as he can be. So I reckon I'll try to line it up maybe one or two up this week. Before I pump, I'm going to try to change the hose on it. I think that's the problem. I think it's just the hose. Pump comes on and runs, it just ain't pumping. Change the hose. And we talked to Troy earlier. Something is eating our chlorine up. We're feeding that a two, better than two, leaving a water plant, but when you get in the Troy, you said it was.
Zero point seven.
So we, I, we ain't had clear wells. So we, I, we ain't had clear wells inspected in a while. I think there may be some kind of growth that's eating our chlorine up. We need to schedule it this week, which we'll probably end up talking to the new engineers. And we make it, add it into, you know, something they're doing. We're gonna try to get it, no out of pocket money. And I see start next month. He's doing all this stuff. And in long term, y'all know what he wants. And any questions?
Stefan, what does that mean?
We actually hired a lady. I think she's in a wastewater field, lab field. She's never done water treatment. But she's catching on. She's taking a lot of notes. Hopefully, she'll make it. The other fella, he's been about how he's going.
So we hired a lady who started last week. She will be sitting for class in two weeks. And with her background education, there's a possibility that she could be certified quicker because of her background. So she will be moving forward with that. We've actually also hired another part-time staff member who works full-time for Ashford. Now, we'd be filling in.
How many people are we down?
We're still down one certified full-time person. We have had a lot of applicants, but not one who's, we've advertised out for certified only because we've got the position of a training field. We're still looking for that certified operator.
Any questions? How long do you think Ricky's gonna be gone? About?
Six months. He'll be back first of February.
We're gonna be at there.
I know. That's why I ask you.
We're gonna have to hire somebody to take the place.
Yeah, he's gonna be gone that long.
We have applicants that have applied, but, you know, they all want full-time. Trying to find somebody who'd be willing to work a six-month period of time is difficult right now.
Aren't you down more than him, Lou?
Well, we got Nate, Brandon, Ollie D., and Jason.
We're only down one.
And that one being Ricky's?
Yes, Ricky's.
Thank you, Mike. Waste water treatment plant with Branch.
Tropical Storm Debbie, August sixth through the ninth. It brought a seven point two inches of rain here in Denton. We did have to report sanitary sewer overflow from three manholes. Charles Underwood was on site on the twelfth of August, and he did complete the rehab of clarifier number one by the sixteenth. In August, we conducted tri-hellamethanes and our HAA five sampling from the water system. We flushed four hydrants for a total of ninety-six thousand gallons over the four days. We completed chronic toxicity sampling at the wastewater treatment plant last week. We've not received any results yet on that. David Nicholson will be sitting for his grade-two exam on the twelfth. So he has been studying for that. We will be land applying. I had, this is a correction. We will not be land applying this week due to the rain that we had on Sunday. We had three inches on Sunday that fell in three hours. So it's now made the fields too wet, and that'll be put off until the tenth. I will be attending a conference on the sixteenth through the eighteenth of this month. I ordered two actuators. Brand name is Uma. I ordered two Uma actuators from Percocin Company as per my capital outlay budget request. And the last thing I just found out before I came up here is we did pass our annual EPA water pollution study. So that was a big deal for us. That's it.
Any questions for Troy?
Troy, you hearing anything from engineers on your?
No, sir. Not yet.
Do you know how much rain we got sending down?
Three inches.
I saw on the news, they said the Denton area got five inches. And I thought, man, that's a lot.
Yeah, that, we were, I think we were lucky at three inches. But it, the problem was an inch and a half fell in one hour.
Yeah.
And I don't, there's not many hurricanes that have dropped that much in an hour. So you get anything over an inch an hour, and that's a lot for any system to handle.
Thank you, Troy. Town Attorney.
So I just sent you guys a copy of the current contract with Andy. With some notes about that, as we were discussing the meters and what the responsibilities are and the gallons. So I'd like you guys to review that contract and perhaps we can talk about that. That contract has been in existence for quite some time, and it's good until December thirty-first of twenty thirty-five. But you guys might want to take a review of it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions and review the contract. But there's some loose language in there that is a little concerning. I'd just like you guys to review it. Other than that, Angel and I have been talking and trying to work out ways to get better communications between commissioners, attorney, and staff. And so we're working on that as well. I think that's all we've got. I bet she may touch on some of that more during her report.
Town Manager, Troy.
Some of this has been covered by other departments. I'm just gonna scan through a couple of things. I did attend the certified zoning conference a couple of weeks ago. And there are some changes coming down that we'll have to look at, updating our zoning ordinance in order to be in compliance with that. As soon as the bill is passed, I will provide that information to you for approval. The staff has scheduled a training with Slendot next week. And that is the company that's reading on our website. We do have an active link, but right now there are some changes that we're waiting so that we can do those changes live with them, showing us how to activate the changes ourselves. So once that's done, we can provide you guys with a link to review the website prior to it going live. Should be within thirty days, and we can go live on that. I was speaking with Heather Miller today about updates on all of our projects. And she provided us the details, but there's still some clarification I sent back to her. So when I did that clarification back from her in the morning, I will send this whole list out to you regarding the projects that we have with them. She has been in contact with the DWI regarding the I and I project bar screen and also the two-inch water lines, the modifications at the wastewater plant. She's gonna contact Troy tomorrow in order to schedule the engineering group to go out and look at the oxidation ditch. Because based on the information that they have, they feel like there should be a way for this to work without a lot of modifications to that ditch. But it'll require them to be on-site to do that.
Oh, really? They're coming to them?
They are coming to them.
Pick up their papers.
The auditors are here. They were working last week and this week on our budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then Cypress Renewables, Cypress Creek Renewables, which is the company that is doing the solar farm that is south of town, is actually gonna hold a public meeting tomorrow night here at Town Hall to discuss a project that they're looking to expand some land on the Botmanville Road to add to that, which is actually located within the town limits. It will be a meeting for those that are adjacent property owners just so they can answer any questions, concerns that they may have. The Bat School Bash was held two weeks ago and was a great attended event for Parks and Rec. The area churches provided backpacks. There was over two hundred backpacks. And then cornhole tournament, pageant, and the movie in the park was well-attended. Street Festival is coming up for October twelfth. And we will look to get the dunking booth added to our event so that we can do our Dunk-a-Hero. I think that would be a great thing. And challenge the board to get in line with everybody else. Maybe that would be a good way to promote community involvement. I do have a consideration. We talked probably two years ago now about the railroad crossing with agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on First Street and them installing an actual crossbar. We do finally have an agreement back to them. This woman has worked with us diligently in trying to go through this agreement, and it's finally came back with questions answered. The one thing that I need to make the board aware of is that it is a project. It is paid for, but we have to pay for the funding upfront. And then we're reimbursed from the state. And I'm just looking. I did not mark my copy. So let me give you that figure that their project cost. SDOT remember right now, it was three hundred thousand.
I don't remember the exact number. Three hundred thousand upfront?
Well, we have to provide the funding for this project, and then they reimburse us for it. It is.
No, that's for.
No, they did not tell that before. They did not tell us that three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars is the estimated cost for the installation of this crossbar. Now, going forward, if we had requested this, it would be a hundred percent our cost, period. But because they're looking to make the cross better all the way through their system, they're coming to us saying there is a grant. You have to pay it upfront, and then you're reimbursed. And it is at a hundred percent reimbursement.
What's the turnaround time?
For the grant, you get reimbursed.
You get reimbursed, yeah. Is it all at one time?
I don't think they told us the exact amount.
It says the department, the department shall be responsible for securing and obligating the federal funding for the warning device work cost. However, the department will not be responsible for the costs not reimbursed by Federal Highway Administration. The municipality shall be responsible for the roadway work cost and for one hundred percent of the costs not reimbursed by the Department of Federal Highway Administration. It's kind of contradictory there.
So if the federal highway decides for, in their infinite wisdom, they don't give that money back, you're SOF.
Correct. You didn't buy. I did ask that question early on, and he said that they've never had it not covered by grant funding. So there's always a chance.
Always the first time.
There's always the first time. But if you decide to not go with this agreement, and later on down the road, you wanted to have that crossbar or that cross installed, it would be at a hundred percent of our cost, period. There would not be any funding for that crossbar or that crossing. So what's, what do you guys?
Does it, but it didn't specify a time period that we take about that reimbursed. No, I don't think so.
No, it did not.
Three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And so they will seek a grant for a hundred percent. Of course, there's no guarantees.
Do we pay the money upfront before they seek the grant?
Uh, that don't sound like it, honestly. It says upon completion of the roadway work, municipality shall invoice the department for one hundred percent of the actual costs associated with the roadway work by submitting an itemized invoice to the department. Upon approval of the itemized invoice by the department, the municipality will be reimbursed for the actual costs associated with the roadway work. The department shall initially reimburse the municipality one hundred percent of the approved allowable costs incurred by the municipality for the roadway work. Such reimbursement shall be subject to policies and procedures contained in the Federal Aid Policy Guide twenty-three CRF Part one forty-seven, Part G. So they're saying, based on this information, they would reimburse us the three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Now, if it costs more than that, I'm reading that that would be on our part. So they're agreeing that that's the cost that it would.
That's what it should take. It also said, in the event the professional services engineering exceed fifty thousand, we have to have a pre-negotiation audit prior to entering into it.
Did I assume the railroad's one doing all the negotiating with the company on? Or the other one's spending it in? Or do we just contact it out? Or railroad contact her down?
So my understanding is, let me refresh my recollection on this. Upon approval, the department will obligate funding and authorize WSS to undertake construction of the active crossing warning devices and, of course, for such plans and estimates. The municipality may proceed with construction of the roadway work within the municipality's right-of-way upon receipt of construction authorization. So we are doing any roadway work, and they are handling the construction of the active crossing warning devices. But the roadway work that we do is reimbursable? Or not? Let's see. When roadway work is required, the following provisions shall be applicable for such work. Municipality shall follow applicable federal or state procedures pertaining to the advertisement of the project, bid, opening, award, or contract, et cetera, et cetera. Here are the requirements. Let's see. Hang on, there's some time for instance. Project. Improvements are proposed for highway railroad crossing. Department and WSS entered into a master agreement for design and construction, executed August fifteenth, twenty nineteen, for coordination and construction warning device pursuant to the terms of the agreements. Project shall be funded in accordance with Title twenty-three. Department is authorized by the provisions of the North Carolina General Statutes to carry out provision of federal aid in highway act for projects on the streets and municipal street system. The department and the municipality are authorized to enter into an agreement for the performance of such work on municipal street system. Whereas the department will enter into such agreements as are necessary to improve the highway rail crossing warning devices that say crossing in to obtain maximum federal aid participation in the cost of the project. So here we go. Scope of the project. Project shall consist of the design and construction of highway rail break crossing safety improvements consisting of active traffic control warning devices and related roadway safety improvements hereafter the roadway work. The project, so the roadway work is considered in the project, and the total project cost they're estimating at three hundred and thirty-eight. So we would be reimbursed for any roadway work as well. So there is no guarantee that you're gonna get the federal aid to do it. They said they've always gotten it, but you are taking a chance. Any other questions, bud?
I might give you a table.
Did they give you any indication of how long this would offer, would remain open?
Oh, I think about the end of the morning.
It's been two years. Maybe we'll just get thirty days out of them.
I can't imagine not. I just imagine if they had a, like, wanna recycle you down to the next on the list if you don't accept it, work is open.
Are there any other questions that you'd like for me to clarify?
To make payments.
Well, one of the questions I have is in their estimates. So how old is that estimate? Because prices are changing rapidly. So, you know, is this a?
Is there an income?
Yeah, that's my concern. You know, when Thomas went to the aquatic center, the original estimate was three million. It ended up costing eight million. So, I mean, it's one of those things that, how old is that estimate? Is that really, you know, what it's gonna cost you? And, you know, once you enter into this, are they gonna redo the estimate? And what if the estimate is five hundred thousand? And you gotta pay that upfront and then get it back. So that's a concern.
Oh, we pay the three, you gotta pay the, from three fifty to five hundred.
The difference. That's the concern, yeah.
I'll verify this information with them and send it out for email for you. The other thing that I, Chief James and I talked about this, and I reached out to the SDOT regarding the increased speed on one oh nine. Commissioner Bean actually mentioned to me that there is a reduced, or again, thirty-five ahead at Palmer Denton Road going south on one oh nine. But there is not a thirty-five mile per hour sign until you get to Quick Check. And so I rode the, traveled the road, looked both ways at where it's established, reached out to them, and it was actually established by an ordinance from the town in nineteen eighty-eight. reached out to them and it was actually established by an ordinance from the town in nineteen eighty-eight. If I'm saying that correctly, I believe it was eighty-eight, um, to have that entire area, forty-five and thirty-five not begin until peacock. With the increased traffic that we're having from new businesses on one oh nine, we have asked them to consider a study for thirty-five from hand sanitary through, um, I believe it changes to forty-five at Troutman's going out of town. Because we have added businesses and we are seeing an increase in traffic. You know, um, Red Hill intersection and Farmer Dent Road both have incidents several times a year. People are driving northbound, they're doing fifty-five by the time they go through Farmer Dent Road. So it is a concern. They did look at that. In order to make that change, the town would have to do an ordinance to have that speed limit changed, present it to DOT for approval. And then they would have to change the signal lights to reflect the thirty-five mile per hour um, speed limit through there, which is at a cost of a thousand dollars per signal. So it just depends on if the town, if you wanna pursue this, I'll get complete figures on what the cost will be and we'll draft up the ordinance for us presented at the October meeting. I just need to know what you think as a board. Do you think it's a problem that's something we should consider? And you can ask Chief James if you have any questions, that anything that they're seeing on their side.
Is, is there science that says, like a lot of towns, or we got some thirty-five by somewhere posted?
Yes.
Okay.
There's not coming north.
That's if they welcomed it in the southbound, but northbound. I'm not sure there's.
There's not one north. There's one southbound at Clotman Mill or northbound at Clotman Mill. Southbound there is not one, and I did ask them about that as well.
Well, I think with the, personally, it was actually brought to my attention by citizens. And, and so I wrote it and I was like, hmm, he's right. And so I mentioned to Angel that she wrote. Um, but I personally think it, it is a problem and I think it should be. You, like you, like you stated, starting at handing through, through Troutman's at least. Chief, what do you think?
Well, I think as we continue to grow, that's probably gonna be needing down the road. One thing that confuses me every once in a while, uh, before the car wash, it says thirty-five mile an hour. So did the DOT not time that light at Rick's Restaurant? Uh, I don't have an answer for that. I would have thought that they would have because the speed limit changed based on what they're telling us. Now, I'm not sure from what they sent. Normally this would be a DOT ordinance, not a town ordinance because it is a North Carolina DOT-controlled road in a NC highway. I assume that it was a state DOT ordinance that changed a few years ago. Uh, and you know, the border transportation would have to do that again after they do a study. But you know, as, as businesses grow and you know, if we end up, I don't know where we stand on the ABC store there, but as more and more things come, uh, you know, I see a need for it. Uh, it's, it's a change, I mean, two thousand dollars or a thousand for interceptions seems a little crazy to me to re-town a, uh, traffic signal.
Aren't we able to talk to interceptions?
Um, he did, I, he sent some information regarding the ordinance and he stayed at town ordinance. So we'll go back and re-clarify that with them to see if it's something through DOT then we could definitely request them to provide that to us. But what I remember from the email, it stated town. So.
Thinking logically, you go from down one oh nine and then going forty-five and then if you turn right there at Red Hill, you're twenty.
And it's not, they're not traveling twenty back. Commissioner Morris, what are your thoughts on that? We'll just call everybody and see.
Alex is studying, just see what the state says. If they, they're doing traffic study. I mean, each one of them sees limits, they see limits. Not that no one travels because of traffic supply.
Exactly, because it, I know that road's bad as people are stopping there to turn into the bank. We always, you know.
Mayor?
I'm Scotty, I had, I'd like to see something in writing.
I agree.
All right, we'll pursue that and bring back some information to you guys at the next meeting.
I have a couple of questions, Angel. Um, Cypress Creek Renewables, is that the same group that it was before?
It is.
Okay.
So.
So are they actually getting ready to do something?
So Mayor and I met with, um, one of their representatives, it was not Harrison Cole, who we've all met with many times. Um, they are moving forward with the project that is south of town across from Track Supply and it runs behind all of the properties along South one oh nine. Also a portion on the, um, east side that is currently a Cliff Waplin property. They are looking to add another portion capturing the old Burlington, um, property, Burlington factory property. Um, that's what they're wanting to meet with the property owners that surround that, that portion.
I thought Plan and Zone had already dealt with that one.
Well.
Is that a different group?
It was a different group and they did move.
Or something.
Yeah. And that was when you, I think you were on the board, Plan and Zone board at that time. It was a different group and that project fell through and then Cypress Renewables started this project. But they're looking to add that portion across the street. I did talk to the representative this afternoon. And in order for Mr. Loughlin to still maintain a business on that property and get a special use permit, which is what's required by ordinance for the Sullard Farm, um, he's looking, they're gonna talk to him about possibly, um, deeding off that section that is still, still has a building and has a business on it so that it doesn't fall under special use permit. So that's what they're still looking at. They're hoping to have a special use, um, application to us by Friday to present at the filing board meeting, so.
What does, with that, if they don't do that, with that option, not that it's any scale likely, but that would also affect Thurman, right? Has that, has the building there on that property? On the Burlington property?
I don't think that's on Cliff's property. I think that's a separate parcel from what they're looking at.
Okay.
It may be owned by, that parcel may be owned by him, but I'm pretty sure it's a different parcel.
Okay.
I'll re, I'll verify that and looking at that. Cause um, when I pulled it up today, it looks like it's just the, um, metal recycling area that's located in there, but we'll verify that and make sure. Whatever, the whole portion, anything that already has established business needs to be separate so that it doesn't apply to that.
I know that, that initial group, they were gonna.
They were gonna do the whole.
The whole area, so that's why I'm asking.
Um, the representative today said it's about a hundred and twenty acres that they're looking at in that portion to add to the five hundred acres that they're already obtained. This project is moving quicker than the one that is located off of, um, White Swamp Road there at number eight. It's moving a lot quicker. They have, I think Power's being sold to Charlotte is what they're looking at.
Angel, I want to know, did she contact you or did you contact her?
I contacted her.
Can you say, would you think that over that?
I can ask that question. The only thing with starting over is that everything's approved by the state for Lobella. It may put us in another time crunch, but I can definitely talk to.
Maybe Woodton knows if it's.
Mr. Gray about it.
And on the SAMLaw, is that, what's been the holdup for years?
So we had to completely restructure the website and, I mean, and honestly, you probably could have just grabbed it and started completely over, but we were trying to take the information that we had and switch it from, it's like taking, um, information from a regular PC to a Mac. They don't talk to each other, so it was two different types of programming. And in order to do that, there was a lot of behind the scenes stuff that we don't do. I don't know how to do it, it's computer lingo. But it's, it's just taken a while. There's a lot of information on that website and it's hidden behind, you know, links and things like that. So it has taken quite a while, but it, like I said, we're, we're about thirty days, thirty days to have it complete, so.
So if you had not reached out to Lobella back to that, they wouldn't have reached out to you?
Well, she hasn't, um, since I reached out to her the last time.
Okay. There's a problem.
If you find out tomorrow, let us know tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, who has authority to close down the mayor's office? And move his desk?
Well, we work at Town Hall and so I took that upon myself to do that. We are out of storage, we do not use this office, it has not been used in the eight years that I have been here. So we closed it, we took and put, um, things that Public Works designed for us in order to store all the banners that we have, which I would think is about thirty or forty. We didn't count them, but, um, there's, we put a rack in there in order to store them. We also stored our lanterns for our memorial project so that they're not, they're in a controlled environment. Um, in doing so, we moved the desk that I had no idea was donated specifically for the purpose of a mayor's desk into the clerk's office and got rid of the broken desk that was at our assistant's office desk and put Hallas there. So in moving forward, we have to work here.
You really think that was a good idea to take the desk out of the mayor's office without letting the board know? If the mayor don't have a desk, don't have an office anymore, do you think that was a good idea?
Well, I, we did it.
I see that.
And if it's a problem, I appreciate you coming to me and talking to me about it. And that's what we did. We, we talked about this, I said, if it's the deal that the desk is not in the.
It's not only the desk, it's the mayor's office. The mayor should have an office.
Mayor, have you used this office in the last eleven years?
That's not the question.
It's been probably.
We're out of space. We do not have space in this building to store what we need to store. And I know you said, oh, you can use that building over there, but Scotty, we have to be able to get to the stuff that we need.
What do you have stored, but aren't we putting everything on?
Everything is not gonna be digital. I don't care if we scan every single piece of paper that comes in here, you still have to have piece of paper. It is not gonna be a paperless society.
I know that, but you only keep it for seven years, right?
Seven years and we have one closet. And we have file cabinets completely crammed full with stuff that we can't get rid of. Every file cabinet in our office is full. But why am I gonna go to another building?
How many, how many times do you have to go get it?
There are times, especially. I have not tracked it, but we can. We can.
I mean, don't you think you should at least ask the board or the mayor?
I really didn't think it would be this big of a problem.
Really?
I really do.
Can I say something? Can I say something?
It's up to the mayor.
Sure.
Can I say something? I have worked here for, as of today, twenty-two years. I want to say, I'm ashamed, I am ashamed that this board or committee, I don't want this to hold or one commission, but we are going to complain and fuss about a piece of wood when there is so much in this town that needs to be taken care of and we are upset about a desk. I'm sorry, I don't care who it was donated for. It is a desk. This town has more things that need to be took care of. Instead of worrying about a piece of furniture that has been sitting in that office for ten years and has not been used. Something better say on the subject, but that's my thoughts on it.
That's my thoughts too. Mayor should have an office, he should have a desk. And if, and if he's not, it shouldn't be your decision, it should be the board's decision or the mayor's decision. I don't care if it is, it's a piece of desk. It, it's the mayor's desk. It's like your desk and the mayor's.
When the mayor is using it, we'll give it back to him. Right now, Scotty, I'm sorry, you're not the mayor right now.
I know I'm not the mayor.
When the mayor needs it, if he wants it, or you're the mayor again, you'll give it back.
Did you ask him?
No.
Okay.
We didn't, but he has plainly told us that he's not worried about it.
Lexington would have went into the mayor's office and took it out?
The mayor works every day, so no.
Yeah, that mayor takes care every day.
They wouldn't have done that there because the mayor works every day. And I'm not disrespecting the mayor.
And I'm not trying to disrespect anybody either, but I'm, I'm just saying, if the people in this town need what was being complained about in here, I think they would be ashamed too, that it's down to complaining about an office and a desk when we've got other things that need to be took care of. I'm sorry, I just think it's pitiful that people are concerned about the wrong things.
We did address this and I said, if this is a major problem, we'll put it back. But we need room and we've expressed that and expressed that with every time we talk about Town Hall project. We need space.
I don't understand, and maybe you can enlighten me, why would you make more space now than in the past?
We have.
It should get ever waking.
Well, in this room, there are boxes of files that, number one, those have to be gone through. But everything that's planning and zoning, it used to be crammed in the manager's office. So we took all that out in order to have a manager's office. I mean, what do you do with it? You have to keep it from now on. There's things that you cannot get rid of. I don't care if you scan everything that comes in here, you have to keep it. You have to keep all payroll files, you have to keep them until the person dies. And if I'm quoting this wrong, please correct me on that. But it's not that we have more files, it's the fact that we've taken it from being piled up in the clerk's office, being piled up in the manager's office and put it in a room that is not being used. That's what we did.
I would like to make one statement and I do have to agree with both of these girls. But when it was brought to the mayor's attention, the mayor addressed me on it and I told him, I said, I apologize. We didn't realize it was gonna be an issue. We will certainly get the desk moved back. No, I haven't yet, I have not purchased one yet. And when I get my first moment, I will purchase one. But I also told him that day that I was very surprised that we're sitting here talking about a desk. He said, it really doesn't bother me. He said, you take your time, find one, purchase it, get you a desk in here. I do understand that it was given to the mayor, but if I had thought that it was going to cause this much conflict, I would have never mentioned it. I'm the one that asked Angel to do it because it was not being used. But at some point, when the mayor's addressed it with me to go ahead and do what I need to do to get it switched out, I feel like he's addressed it. To bring it back before this board again tonight and to fuss at the manager about it, I think is uncalled for. And I do disagree, there are a lot of things in this town that need to be addressed and taken care of and it is not to sit and talk about a desk. And I know that's your feeling, my feeling.
I'm not, I'm being scolded, but.
I'm not scolding you, I'm just making.
I'm a legal teacher, same as everybody is up here.
That's perfectly fine.
And y'all work at the pleasure of the board.
That's perfectly fine. And if you see that that I don't, then that is perfectly fine too.
I'm just stating, that's what happens.
The room right here. Can we not put our stuff in that room?
Well, it was in there and I cleaned it out. Number one, we've got auditors this week, so it's locked. But we cleaned it out in case there is a time that you need to go from this room to that room during a meeting. I mean, here lately when we have closed session, you dismiss the people, the public.
Got it.
But there could be a time, it has been a time, when we need that room for our closed sessions during a meeting. And I think that was important and what our goal was, is to set a meeting area up in that, in that particular office for the mayor to have a place to come if he had to meet with someone, you can go into that office. But to hold a room open that we need, uh, like I said, I made the decision.
All I have, ma'am.
So, what'd you say?
That's all I have.
Oh, okay.
I have a question.
Can we not resolve this?
As mayor, how would you want to resolve it?
I like that room right there, I don't, I don't think, if we need to go in closed session, we could use the mayor's office, you know? What do you think, attorney? Let's hear your opinion.
It's a good idea to have a room you can use as a closed session, but there's no reason that that couldn't also serve as the mayor's office. But if there's a particular desk that was donated for that purpose, then obviously you have to ask the person that donated it if it's acceptable to do something with it. But as long as the person gets permission, then that wouldn't be an issue either. So it's. I don't know what the actual needs are, we'll discuss it, figure it out.
Yeah, that's what I'm discussing, needs, figure it out.
But you don't work here every single day, and I'm really not trying to be disrespectful.
But it could have been a simple question asking us, or asking the mayor.
Well, she did say she was going to store some stuff in there, and I was okay with that, but I didn't realize it was that magnitude, how much she's got in there. Obviously, you do have a space problem.
We do.
And there's really no other place to look in this building.
No, because we have an abundance of museum stuff in here still too.
And the desk was donated by who?
Council. That's the man who does both work.
The manager's desk is in really bad condition, so.
I'm just saying it was donated.
Wouldn't be proud of it.
Well, it's been several years.
Mayor, how do you want us proceed?
It's a tough question. I see it both ways. Not because I'm the mayor, not because I use that office every day, but this is the town hall, this is the expectation that the mayor is here. The mayor needs an office, I have to agree with that totally. I also understand, uh, you know, when we talk a little bit later tonight, this kind of leads into what I want to talk about. But, uh, certainly we need the space. I think it would have been better to have used that room over there. What do you think, Ann? What's going on?
I, I.
Have a conversation?
I think a question should have been asked before it was just taken upon it to be done. I do agree with, with, um, Misty about, you know, a room for, for closed session and the mayor's office to be, be a dual purpose. But I still think it should have been at least addressed to you prior to it being done, if not to anyone.
Is there enough room in that office to put the mayor's desk in there and leave the table in there that's in there?
No.
It's not?
I suppose there are huge conference tables.
Yeah.
And I can be honest, I've never seen that room so well.
What do you think?
We just don't always get in there. I mean, I think it's you, it was your desk, I think it's up to you, I do think they need more storage, I think that's evident. This room is bigger, I think the question is, are we going to continue to use that ever for conference room? Are we going to just stay here like we have for the last two years? At which point, if we are, that can be storage.
What do you think, Ann?
I agree, convert that room completely to storage, put the desk that was donated back in the mayor's office, we can have closed session in there. And everybody should be happy with that, I hope.
Okay. Let's do that. Work out better. Moving on.
I have a totally different question. Do we, any say so, Robyn Sage is not supposed to go on private property, is that correct?
Chief James, can you address that?
Uh, well, they have permission of the owner to do it, like they use the old dye plant, they use it today now.
But if they went into public, uh, if they went into private property from the dye plant?
I, I know they, the person over it alluded to me today that they did that, he wasn't happy that they had done it, they shouldn't have. Uh, but I think some of the water players did make that mistake and go on the property that, that joins the dye plant.
Yes. And so that's why.
They should not have done that, I don't, or did they contact, I was there when they were cleaning stuff up. I saw Mr. Wright go through the woods, whether he talked to that homeowner or not, I don't know. But I suspect he admonished his people for doing that.
Okay.
Normally, they would not.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Any more questions for Captain Andrew? If not, commissioners, comments, any concerns? Well, I have one. What I want to talk about is the bank. I think it's time, after seven years, it's time that the decision is made as to what we're going to do with this town. Are we going to keep it? Are we going to sell it? Are we going to make a parking lot? Are we going to remodel it? Obviously, the conversation we just had, we need the space, and we need it now. I would like to appoint a committee of three of the commissioners and, and to have a meeting or two or three or whatever it takes, and report back to this board at an open meeting, and I know that's a quick turnaround. But I would like for Ann to be part of that because of her knowledge with materials and things of that nature. And Scotty, with his background in real estate and the functions of the town, and Dana in banking. Can we do that? And meet real soon? Let's choose a date and a time right now. I want this to happen. I think this is important for our town.
I would do, uh, I mean, yeah. We're arguing, we're arguing over, over space.
Space, and we have a big.
And we have, we have sat there for.
Perfect lead for this.
I think it's the perfect opportunity.
Yep, let's get it done. And I don't think Misty would mind if we would go to Thomasville and look at our renovation of the bank.
No, that's perfectly fine.
You said it was five hundred thousand dollars?
That was years ago, wasn't it?
Well, it was actually less than that, um, it was that the renovation costs were less than that. But I mean, you're welcome to come and tour our building, we'll show you what we did, what the before and after looked like, because Scotty's seen the building. But you know, it's, you can spend as much money or as little money on a renovation as you want to.
You know, keep in mind, with the renovation of the bank, you've got this building to look at too. And you've got a museum to think about, a possible. How much space do you need, police chief?
Well, once we get a sardine, we're going to be pretty cramped. You know, we can put a sardine right behind, you know, when you come in the front door. Uh, I mean, we, we can make do with what we've got for a while, but as, as we grow, we're going to run into the same issues. And we've got a storage building that we've got filed, and, and you know, we need it, we've gotten to have it.
Yeah, just thinking, if you ran a petition across here, gave this park a barbed, made a museum in here and the rest of you, could that work for a while?
You mean this side here?
Yeah, whatever side you want.
Either one.
Well, we would do our best to make that work. Are you talking about just this and nothing else?
And that's a, yeah, whole side of the.
Yeah, whole side.
Yeah, with that, with that and this, I think we're good. And we could do something different with the museum.
More?
I've always thought the museum with the police office here in the same building, that would be a good fit.
And we're, the town doesn't have the rights to the museum anymore, so you need to take that into consideration wherever you're making space for them. Same entity.
Y'all would get together, go have a meeting, and I would suggest doing it at the bank.
I'd also like to state that it is a public meeting, because you've got three elected officials at the same meeting, so you have to advertise it. And you have to allow public into on the meeting.
And you have to do how many days?
Forty-eight hour notice.
You can keep the notes.
Yeah, when we have our meeting, you know, remember, I would like to have our architect here too, maybe. Maybe we need to have a, a meeting just to discuss the bank, not to do it. What do you think about something like that?
Use the same architect, maybe we should meet with him.
Okay.
Too, after we meet, and then have the architect meet with us, you talking about?
Come up with a cost figure.
Who's the architect? You don't have one right now.
I started saying, we don't have one.
He's not going to do it.
Well, Mr. Briggs said that he would be more than glad to work with the town, but he needs a cost that you're looking at.
Right.
Establishing, and at that point, he just kind of dropped it until you go back with a price to say what it is that you'd like to try to come in budget on.
So if we tell him what we want to do, it's his responsibility to come up with a price for us, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Let, let us meet and get a game plan, and then we call him in if we need to.
Okay.
Start somewhere, that's something.
So you want to set your reading dates so Angel can advertise them?
Yes.
We're at the tent.
That should be good.
I can do what's half.
Six.
September the tenth here at town hall?
No, it might.
At the that building, six P M.
Great. Michael, I've got one more. I can't sleep at night, it's really bothering me. Since we're talking, I've got some, I want to go, yeah, I talked to Robyn the other day, and, uh, we were. The amount of money that we received on water bills was a little over a hundred thousand per month, correct? Okay, if we're losing thirty percent because of the water meters, and that's what they say, and that's what several towns say. If we're, if it was your business and you were losing thirty thousand dollars a month, what would you do about it? I mean, we're, we're not doing anything on this issue. If we get the meters, and yes, the water bills are going to go up, but you know what? The infrastructure in this town is a hundred years old nearly, where are you going to get the money to fix that? It's got to come from somewhere. Think of the money you could put back at, let's say a modest figure, twenty thousand dollars a month. If you do that for ten years, it's quite a bit of money, the money to fix the infrastructure, and you can't really rely on a grant. Because every town in North Carolina is in the same boat.
So I did meet with the other contractor, and then he got some verification from Michael's group. I don't recall if it was Wednesday or Thursday, but, um, he's gathering the final information so that we can do a push out. He said, I'd prefer to have them all, all the information to you, so you can make an honest decision on which metering system and which company you'd like to use. So as soon as, um, I told him that we really needed it back as soon as possible, because I've got the others. I think Michael had one of his employees to go around with and show him, um, several different areas that he was asking questions about. So hopefully, that'll be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks.
When did we hear from that first company?
It was last year, because we were just kicking around the idea, and I reached back out to Fordline. So he's, they're still in, on board, they're still ready to do whatever we wanted to do. And he's actually taken the information that I provided to everybody else and is updating it based on the true numbers, so.
How many grants do we have right now that would pay for these water meters?
You still have your state funding, that we can use that money for the water meters.
Please consider this, I, I think it's.
We're just waiting on price.
Big time, okay. I've got the whole copy at home.
Yeah, we've been on board the whole time, I think.
Okay, great.
You put out RFP.
Well, we've got all the information in from them, you know, it fell under what was required for an RFP. I guess it depends, uh, after you look at those four different companies, you still want to do the RFP, we definitely can to get a more structured, um, bid process in from them, but I mean, it's kind of simple, it's meters where you're going to place them, your system on everything, but, yeah.
And what have you seen so far? Have, have, have the numbers been close?
They are.
Has, has the equipment been similar?
Equipment's very similar, um, one company, I can't call the name off, but he had to tell me that he actually supplies the meters to the Fordline. I'm not sure, but I can say, I mean, we have experience with Fordline, that's the company that we buy our water sewer lines, our meters, our setters and everything from, and they're just very reliable. If Michael needs something, and the last man up there, very reliable, that, I'm not saying that the other ones can't be, but that's what we have to compare to, right?
That's what I was going to say, if you're a company that don't even have the respect to come visit us, to sell us, or I mean, a lot of these people are just coming out of woodwork, this is big money, I ain't saying for two years.
As soon as the word went out, we were looking, you've had everybody show up.
Like I said, I want somebody who's got a problem, they're going to take them right here.
I would like to know who dated some water and candies we had, just for reference.
Andy's getting ready to redo their system. Deserets that we're using is a drive-by reach system.
I'll reach out to them and ask them what system they're using. The one thing that's beneficial to this as well is that, um, everyone's spoken to, their systems feed straight into our utility billing. So that cuts out not only the man in the field, but it also reduces the error and, you know, us hand keying in information. And then we have the ability to see leaks live, which will be a huge benefit for some residents that have a long-term leak issue.
Ted?
Mayor, can I say something?
You sure can.
I agree that there are a lot of problems, and we are trying to address them. And the years that I have been on board, I'm now finishing year three, um, I feel like we've been walking through meluses on everything we've done to do. And, you know, I, we've had, we've had to hire new town manager, we've had to have a, a new town clerk, we've had to have. We've had to have personnel. I mean, there's been a lot that we've had to walk through trying to get to where we, where we can actually walk and not crawl anymore. And, you know, and then we have unknowns like our, you know, the grant, the grant funding that we have. We've had, you know, very little response from them. Every time we have to ask them, they don't come to us. They don't say, oh, here's where you are on your project. We have to ask them, and that's a problem. And I'm not blaming you. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm blaming them, but, you know, we just, I feel like we have done a whole lot of hurry-up and wait, even with, even with the bank building. And it's like, we go and we work on something, even the meters. We work on it and then it's dropped for a while and we don't hear anything about it. And I know that we've had, you know, it's kind of hard to keep all the plates juggling in the air, which is part of the reason I keep pushing for having some sort of chart that we have every project that's pending, everything. And then that way, we have timelines and we're like, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize that we've been working on this project for a year and a half and haven't really made any, any move. And, you know, I think that's part of our problem is, and it's part of the frustration for y'all. I know that you're out of space. I mean, and I know that, that you did what you thought was right in the moment. And there's a lot of charged electricity around here. And I don't like, I don't like division. I don't like divisiveness. I like for people to work together. I like for us to feel like we're, we're all one team, that we're all working together. And I think that, that COVID has made it very hard to come back from. And I just think that we all need to redouble our efforts on, on trying to work together to better the town, to make progress. And I hope my last year that we see all kinds of stuff done. Because I just think that, that for three years, I've sat here waiting to see something happen and, and I've seen very little happen. Except hiring people. That's one thing of the police department. That's all I'm saying.
You know, one other thing I might add, financial. My thing would be the general thing. You know, I sat down with Dana about a year ago and we looked at it. We had two and a half million, million dollars in there. If they fair guessed, that we were probably around three now, two seventy-five.
Total.
I mean, that is more money than this town has ever had.
I suppose we've got more money than we've ever had.
Yeah, it's a considerable amount compared to what we had years gone by. I would think that if you want us to, you know, we could probably get somebody up here from the State Treasury Department and tell you how your finances are. I would like to know. I'm sure they would do something like that. I would think so. You know, we have an auditor. I don't know if you could...
With your audit fee, I mean, they submit the audit. That's what they look at. They look at what your figures are as compared to what they require for you to have as a municipality. So in submitting that audit, if we were not in good standing, we would know that by now. But, you know, with the audit, I could ask Eddie, you know, to present a more in-depth information on your standards if that's what you're asking for.
Our financial health and how we compare to other towns of similar size and where we, what we have to have as a minimum to maintain versus what might be superfluous for us.
Does that sound like something this board would like to do? So let's get any, get in here, start.
Yeah, let's start with the end of the stage.
Yes.
It'd be a good spot, please. Okay. Anything else on Commissioner concern? If not, this board is going into closed session for attorney-client privilege. Thank God for coming tonight.
How much more should we call a second?
Second. Hold on, please, yeah. We're now in closed session. You'd like a water before we get started? I'm going to get me one for what.
I'll get you one, I'll get it.
You got it?
Yeah.
I got a Diet Pepsi, though. My desk drawer has the rest of the stuff. Anybody else need water?
I think we're good.
We're good.
Thanks, Karen.
There's nothing we need to ask Angel, correct?